All right. Hello, everybody. The Tuesday, May 5th meeting of the Corder Madera Town Council will come to order. Rebecca, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Avazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Thank you.
Will everyone please join me in the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
The United States of America.
America.
Through the Republic.
Of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now it is open time for public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak on an item not on the agenda have three minutes to do so now. Rebecca, is there any one who wishes to speak from the public?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. I will check for raised hands in just a moment, but we do have one email so far that was sent into publiccomment@tcml.org. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind those viewing at home that you are welcome to send public comment to publiccomment@tcml.org at any point during the meeting, and it will be read at the appropriate time. And would also be archived and available to the council and the public as well as archived on the town's website. First, we have an email from Peggy Burnett, who says, "Lack of public restrooms during shelter in place. This has become a public health problem, especially for seniors, who need to use bathrooms more frequently than younger people. Coffee shops and gas stations have closed their bathrooms and city restrooms are locked. Sheltering in place should recognize that people should be encouraged to get exercise outside and also have access to bathrooms so long as they social distance." And that is the end of that comment. It is, since that came in earlier, I already placed that on the handout section on your dashboards. You'll see also there the copy of the PDF of the council agenda, as well as a PDF of the staff report that was uploaded to the website earlier today for item 6C, the town manager update. Now checking for raised hands. Okay, I see no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Peggy. With that, we will close public comment. I'll just mention to everyone watching that immediately after this meeting, once the town council meeting adjourns, we will have a meeting of sanitary district two that will begin immediately thereafter. And with that, if the town attorney Teresa Stricker is on the line, we will have her introduce Anne Danforth.
Yes, I am on the line, and my apologies. I seem to be experiencing technical difficulties, so I have called in, so I do not have visual at the moment. I wanted to, first of all, say that we, I am thrilled to announce that you have a new assistant town attorney, Anne Danforth, Anne brings a wealth of experience to the town of Corder Madera. She has more than three decades of municipal law experience, with most of that experience really steeped inland. She will be working with the planning department and the planning commission. And I am very pleased to report that not only does Anne bring a wealth of municipal law to the town of Corder Madera, but she has more than two of her three, or nearly two of her three decades of municipal law experience, serving as the town attorney for Tiburon. So with that, I will welcome Anne aboard.
Thank you. I have shared Anne's camera.
Thank you so much, Teresa. It's very nice to be, to be welcomed to Corder Madera, a town that I've been very fond of for a very long time.
All right. Thank you, Teresa, and thank you, Anne. Welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. With that, there are no presentations, so we will move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously. Are there any council members who wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? David?
Mr. Mayor, I have just a short question or two on 4I on the operating budget.
All right, we will pull 4I. Are there any staff members who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to pull, pull item 4G and move it to the upcoming council meeting.
Okay, got it. We will continue 4G to a future meeting. Are there any members of the public who would like to either pull an item from the consent calendar or make public comment on the consent calendar?
Okay, just let me check briefly for any raised hands. Oh, um. I apologize. Somebody had had their hand raised during public comment, but then it went away, and now he thinks that there was an error. So I can call on him at this point, if that is okay with the mayor?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Just a minute, please. Roy Wolford, you have been unmuted. I apologize. Your hand was raised briefly, and then it went away.
Well, it was up. It's down. It starts in that raised position when the application starts. And the escape key, which was plaguing me in the past, is not plaguing me now on that, but I don't know, rascally hand again. I want to thank and compliment town manager Todd, the staff, and all the council members for being good and effective communicators. When I've called the town, the staff doesn't answer. I leave a message. They always call back. On April 22nd, we had a call at the house here from one of the town staff inquiring how we were doing. That is very much appreciated. Shows the town cares. I'll contrast that with the county where they don't return, they don't answer the call, answer the phone ever. They don't, they don't call back when a message is left. They don't reply to most emails. I mean, it's really sad. So I hope that the, the town staff, Todd, council members, you have a lot more success and luck with communicating with the supervisors and the other employees of the county, because it's, I'm very, very disappointed in them. They have not been helpful at all, not at all. And I've sent emails to them, and you've seen some, some emails. So I would just like to say, in concluding, as a town, as a state, as a county, as a society, we must get open for business. And so let's maybe get Amy's up and going before the end of the month. I think we can get the construction workers back. They practice physical distancing. I don't like the term social distancing. It means basically shutting the society down, not talking. Physical distancing means, you know, taking whatever protective measures and precautions necessary when in public. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents. And again, I really appreciate the effort of the town of Corder Madera, the manager, the council members, and the staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Wolford. And if you do want to make a comment again in the future, and you're having difficulties, it works well to send an email to publiccomment@tcml.org and let me know to unmute you. And I will do so at the appropriate time. There are no additional raised hands for the consent calendar.
Okay, great. David, I think since you pulled 4I just for questions, just for informational purposes, I think if it's okay with the town attorney, I'd like you to go ahead and ask your questions to staff about 4I, and then we can go ahead and vote on the entire consent calendar minus 4G, which has been continued to a future meeting.
Thank you very much. Won't be long. This is kind of a background to lay a report by town manager, I'm sure, but the update, fiscal update, revenues and expenses should represent 75% of the year, right? And the two items that are kind of lagging below 75% on the revenue side are, to me, a little bit surprisingly, property tax at 57% instead of 75%. And sales tax, not surprisingly, at 65, 66% instead of 75%. I'm just wondering, is there something special about the receipt in the process of making property tax revenues available through the county that slows us down, or is there something else going on?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, you know, this, it's a timing issue. And so, you know, we will receive one, probably 99 to 100% of our property taxes this year, but it's really a timing issue of when we receive it from the county and when this report is written. I honestly almost pushed this report back a meeting just to have a more accurate view, kind of to your point. But it's really a timing issue of when we receive the, the revenues from, from the state handed down to the county, handed down to the local agencies.
Okay, and we'll be talking more about the sales tax situation later, I assume. That's, that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. In that case, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I'll move to approve items 4A through J, with the exception of item 4G.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. All right, that takes care of the consent calendar. There are no public hearings, so we will move on to business items. And our first business item is 6A, which regards authorizing the director of Public Works to award a contract for $789,000 to Coastside Concrete Construction Incorporated for the 2020 Accessibility Improvement Project. Is there a staff report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn this report over to RJ Suko, our Director of Public Works. RJ, are you on the line?
That's not good.
RJ, you there?
He is not muted.
It's showing as muted on mine.
RJ, can you hear us?
System's down. Shield's offline.
All right, if RJ needs a minute, maybe we go on to 6B and then come back to 6A after.
Okay, sounds good. Let's do that.
All righty, sounds good. So we will move on to item 6B for now. This is related to council member committee appointments for 2020 through 2021. We discussed potential committee appointments at the, at our last public meeting, which was the council's strategic planning retreat. And based on the feedback I received from council members, I've put together a proposal for this year's committee assignment. So I think what might be best is if I just read my proposed committee assignments, council members can take notes of what they've been potentially assigned to, and then we can discuss after if anybody has any objections. How does that sound? Okay, great. All right. With that, I'm going to start reading off here our primary representatives and our alternates to the various committee appointments. So first off, we have A-BAG Marin Delegates Committee. I think primary, I would propose Charles and David as the alternate. Age-friendly Corder Madera, Fred as the primary, Bob as the alternate. Pedestrian, the BPAC, Bob as the primary, Charles as the alternate. Central Marin Fire Authority, the Fire Council, Bob and myself as the primaries, Fred as the alternate. The Police Council, Bob and myself as primaries, Fred as the alternate. Central Marin Sanitation Agency, myself as primary, Fred as alternate. Corder Madera Chamber of Commerce, ex officio director, myself as primary, David as alternate. Coalition Connection, Bob as primary, Fred as alternate. The Community Development Block Grant and Home Program, David as primary, Charles as alternate. Disaster Council, David as primary, myself as alternate. Blood Control Board, Fred as primary, myself as alternate. Land Use Committee, Charles as primary, David as alternate. Larkspur Corder Madera School District Liaison, David as primary, Charles as alternate. League of California Cities, North Bay Division, myself as primary, David as alternate. Marin Clean Energy, David as primary, myself as alternate. MCCMC Homelessness Committee, Bob as primary, Charles as alternate. MCCMC Legislative Committee, myself as primary, David as alternate. MCCMC Climate Action Committee, David as primary, myself as alternate. Marin Ready Together, Bob as primary, David as alternate. Marin Wildfire, JPA, Bob as primary, Fred as alternate. Refuse and Recycling Committee, David as primary, Charles as alternate. Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, Fred as primary, Bob as alternate. Safe Routes to School, Charles as primary, Bob as alternate. Citizens Tax, Sales Tax Oversight Committee, Fred as primary, David as alternate. Transportation Authority of Marin, Charles as primary, David as alternate. MCCMC COVID Recovery Committee, myself as primary. And we'll come back to soliciting if anybody wants to be an alternate for this. So we'll keep that alternate spot open until I get this last one in. The Larkspur Corder Madera School District Financial Advisory Committee, which is a committee just created by Superintendent Brett Geifman to help the school district navigate the sort of changing financial landscape with regards to COVID. I would nominate David as primary and Charles as alternate. And lastly, I would nominate Fred to the town council's finance subcommittee. So with that, I think the only thing that is not resolved is, would anybody like to join me as an alternate or a second representative? Because cities and towns are allowed to have up to two representatives on the newly formed MCCMC COVID Recovery Committee.
Yeah, this is Fred. I don't mind joining you with that.
Okay, sounds good. Fred, I will put you down. And that committee is meeting every Friday, so I will get you looped into that before this Friday's meeting. All right, council members, any questions or comments about these proposed assignments? Everybody happy?
I just had, what, you went through it pretty quick.
Sure.
Quickly. The one that surprised me was when you mentioned the disaster council. I, I'm not sure if you could just repeat what you suggested on that disaster council.
I proposed, I proposed you for primary and myself for alternate.
Bob, are you okay with that? You were the primary before.
Yes, I'm fine with that. I'm getting overextended, so please. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on these? Awesome. Okay, that takes care of 6B then. Actually, Teresa, does this item need public comment?
6B would need public comment, yes, before you finalize it. Yes.
Great. Let's take public comment on council member committee appointments for 2020, 2021. Rebecca, you'll let us know.
Mayor Beckman, I see no raised hands.
No raised hands and any emails to the public comment email account?
No emails. However, Roy Wolford's hand is raised again, but I know he's having difficulty.
Come on, Roy.
Perhaps we can unmute him to see, just in case. I did email him, but I have not heard back yet.
Okay.
Hello, Roy. Your hand is raised. I'm calling.
My, my hand has a red arrow pointing down. Hey, this, this program's spooky.
Okay, I just.
All right, we'll chalk it up to this weird program. Okay, cool. That takes care of 6B then. Public comment is closed. Shall we go back to 6A then? Is RJ ready to deliver a staff report?
Yes, let's try.
Gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Mayor Beckman, Vice Mayor Kuhnhart, members of the council, thank you. Apologies for the technical issues. We had competing Bluetooth devices. So Rebecca has a PowerPoint slide for me, and she'll be navigating that as I narrate. The item before you is the 2020 Accessibility Improvements Project. This is part of a much larger effort. This is one of two projects that the goal is to install preventative maintenance treatments on approximately 20% of our townwide roadway network. Next slide, please. So here is a map. Just with, not trying to get into details, but give a little idea of really the scale of what we're trying to accomplish here. The, the roads in red represent what would be a slurry seal or a slightly modified version of a slurry seal. And the, and the roads in blue represent what we call a thin maintenance overlay or a bonded wearing course. So we're, we're going to make a lot of strides here and take a lot of roads in the fair condition and try to bring them up into like-new condition as part of these two projects. The 2020 Facility Project, and then secondly, this Preventative Maintenance Project, which will become before you in approximately a month. Next slide, please. The other item I wanted to touch on is, you know, if you refer back to the, the June budget, you may have noticed that some of the dollars set aside, you know, are a little different. And that's partly because we've added in some of these smaller projects. This particular one was a grant received from TAM to do some safety improvements at Redwood and Pixley. Next slide, please. In addition, there were some other opportunities to do some safety improvements on Madera Boulevard. That's very close to the Safeway as you cross over to Madera Gardens. Next slide, please. Here's another intersection over at Manona, closer to the gas station there on the corner of Tamil Pius. And so we thought there was an opportunity because of the amount of concrete improvements, you know, with the curb ramps, that we were going to get greater car me scale by lumping these projects into one bid project. Next slide, please. And so in addition to the, the image is shown, there was, there were, there's 65 concrete curb ramps associated with corners, street corners related to those slurry seals. And so we're moving forward that work first, and then later we'll be coming through with the, the seal project later, but it takes several months to build the concrete curb ramps, hence why we've divided it into two separate projects. Since all of this has been in development, as we all know, there's been the COVID event that we're still in, and we're trying to project forward. As a result, we've taken a look at our overall proposed delivery construction list. And so this was first introduced at the strategic workshop a couple of weeks ago. There was one change to that in that we did look into the LED lighting conversion project, and we're planning to add that into this, or not add this, but keep that into this year's summer program. But other than that, we believe everything fits within the, the budget and the funds that we think is appropriate, given the COVID impacts. And that includes the, the second project for the slurry seal project. Next slide, please. So the other piece that I want to discuss is kind of explaining why the bids came in high, and that was really, you know, a couple of things. One was there was a mistake in the engineer's estimate. You'll see, and pardon me, that it might be a little small print or grainy, but there were three items related to roadway digouts. These are the deeper roadway asphalt repairs. And we had two staff members working on separate tasks, so one was working on this and one was working on the, on the curb ramps. And in the end, we failed to really combine them all. So there was a large, approximately $275,000 item that didn't include, get included into that engineer's estimate, but should have been. And once you reflect those dollars, it ups the engineer's estimate to approximately $855,000. And therefore, this, this low bidder would have come in approximately 7.6 below that, that number. And so I just thought, before we, you know, asked for your authorization to move forward, I wanted to explain and make sure that the council understood those pieces. As I understand, there are a lot of moving pieces with this. But we do think it's a great project. We think there's going to be a lot of benefit to the overall town roadway network. I've also been speaking to a number of agency folks, a number of contractor folks, and really trying to understand the bids that we did receive and considered the thought of rebidding this, to see what happens. But I do actually think that should we do that, not only would we lose at least a month's worth of schedule and time, I actually think we would end up with likely a higher bid and possibly from the very same contractor. And that's, that's why I'm, I'd like to recommend that we move this forward at today's meeting.
All right. Thank you, RJ. Are there any questions for staff from council members?
Yeah, this is Fred. I have just a couple of questions. RJ, good job, by the way, on some of these pedestrian crosswalks, especially on Moana and also on Mohawk. Was there any consideration now or at a future point, I want to say, to put the same type of flashing lights that are on Tamil Pius for pedestrians when they're crossing? Because I know especially Moana, it's kind of dangerous there, trying to cross over that crosswalk because of the cars coming and speeding. And then the other question is on the revised VIP project list, real quickly. There's, I think, 266,000 budgeted for projects that are under 100,000. Can you just maybe just give a brief summary what those projects are? I believe one of them may be the dog park, but I was just wondering what they are. Thanks.
Absolutely. So yes, to answer your first question, yes, you're, you're right. We do have the rectangular rapid flash beacons going in at both of those intersections that were shown, that being Manona and Mohawk. And then separately, project will bring, that we got, we're happy with the bids we got today, the Tamil Vista Complete Streets project will be coming forward, likely at the, the next meeting. And that one also has a number of rapid flash beacons on Tamil Vista as well. So that's definitely one of the priority streets. As you know, it's, it's a, it's a busier street in town, and then also has a fair amount of pedestrian volume. And so we want to emphasize the importance of those safety devices in those areas. Secondly, on the project list, yes, you're correct, Dog Park is definitely one of them. And I'm trying to recall off the top of my head what else we have. We have so we did have some other rapid flash beacons that were recently installed on Tamil Pius as well at several intersections that didn't prior have those. So that's one of those smaller projects that, that was included. And I may have to get back to you, Fred, on, on kind of the remainder of the list. We do have it. It's just embedded in our spreadsheet.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it. Thanks for the rapid, rapid lights. I just think they're really helpful when you're trying to cross those streets, so it's greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Great. Any other questions from council members? If not, I've just got one question before we move to public comment. RJ, when we did the, the last capital improvement budget, these ADA improvements that we're doing were originally part of a larger $1.2 million pavement project, and that's been split into two projects, one of which is the ADA improvements. I just wanted to confirm with you that in light of these sort of changing estimates here, that based on what we're looking to pay for this portion of the project, there will still be remaining funds for the, for the remaining portion of the project of that 1.2, which I guess went up to 1.8 when further projects were added into it. But basically, I just want to make sure that we're still on budget for the remainder of the work that is not covered here.
Yes, we are in that, the revised list that we were showing a second ago. Rebecca, if you can go back one slide, please. That is all.
On RJ?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so this one is, is the more accurate to date projection of what we want to deliver. So here we have the 833 for this current project, and we have another 950 for preventative maintenance later. Those are, we feel very comfortable about those numbers. Those do include these other small improvements. And then also on top of that, regardless, we've already seen some opportunities for value engineering, and we think, so we got $50,000 of safe pathway money on this current project before you. We see an opportunity to save $50,000 right off the bat, based on some, some details of the bid we saw. Secondly, as part of the, the later project of preventive maintenance, we, we recently have started talks with Mill Valley and teaming up with them and combining their slurry project. and combining their slurry project with ours. And so really by, we're essentially doubling our area now. And that'll really, we think, save the town quite a bit of money, you know, perhaps $100,000 just by teaming up them. So, so really I think the later project is going to be safely under the 950. And I think you'll see that when we bring that before you in about a month with an estimate that is left it.
Fantastic. Thank you. Rebecca, is there any public comment on this item?
Let me check the email first. Okay, I see one raised hand. Oh, it went away. And no additional comments. I did get an email from Roy Wolford. I'm not sure if that meant he was going to raise his hand. Let's unmute him just in case. Roy, did you have a comment on the project?
No, no, this, this green hand business is really spooky. So the, the prior green hand, which the arrow was pointing down and you said it was green. My wife, Arlene, says, I wonder if they're going to call on you and say the green hand is up.
You had no hand up. I actually.
I was just, no, it is. The green hand is up. But I was just, I mean, maybe it's my magnetism, just, you know, moving the electrons up on the screen or something. Because I was just watching the screen and the green hand went up. It's still up. I'm going to click it down now.
No, actually it's, it's down now. Green, green means you press the green hand when you want to raise your hand.
No, I understand that. It's green and the mic's on. So I guess it automatically goes up when the mic goes on. I didn't touch my computer and the green hand went up.
All right, maybe we'll figure this out sometime between now and the next meeting, hopefully, and get this straightened out. Anyway, okay, Rebecca, any other public comment?
No additional public comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. In that case, I will entertain a motion. Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Are there questions? There are comments from council members?
I had a small one and a big one. First of all, I'm sure that it's Roy's magnetic personality that is turning on the signals. But the small is that the project at the intersection of Pixley and Redwood Ave is, I think, desirable for the sake of improving visibility anyway. But it is one that is strongly endorsed by the Safe Roots to School folks who are doing without a crossing guard at that unsignaled intersection. But it, it had visibility issues. The narrowing there will slow traffic and will improve that little intersection. My big comment is that I think it's, it's great if we can roll forward with some of these projects during a time when traffic is down and we are not creating as big an impediment to the movement of folks around. And maybe the influx of dollars in the economy will help.
That's all.
Thank you. I agree. Are there any other comments from council members? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to the approval of the capital improvement project update.
Mayor Beckman, if possible, Jim Robinson had his hand raised and then it went off again. And then I got a comment that says he actually does wish to comment if it's possible.
Yeah, let's hear from him.
He did have some technical difficulties at the last meeting, so hopefully this works for us. Mr. Robinson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. I did have my hand raised, but I did have a concern about the up and down thing, but I think it got straight now. The red hand of ulster, I'll call it. The question I have is a simple one. On Manona, as you approach Lakeside, I was curious if the overlay project portion that was mentioned earlier on by our public director, if that area is included. I know it was marked by staff in a number of areas on Tamil Vista and also on, on Manona as you approach Lakeside, because that's where a lot of traffic comes into Neil's coming, Neil Cumming School. And there's a lot of alligatoring there and the roadway is deteriorating there greatly. And I'm just curious if that was still part of that project.
Hi there. Hi Jim, this is RJ Suko. So we do have some repairs in that area that you're referring to that are included in this project. But the, as far as a widespread, larger paving effort, that'll likely be a couple of years down the road. We're trying to focus geographically in areas and move through town. We feel this will get the best thing for our buck. And so we will address the immediate stabilization and instabilities you're talking about. And then we'll come back in several years and look at which streets in those neighborhoods are deserving of further treatment.
RJ, can I just add to that question? So are you still looking at storm sewer work on Manona and those areas? And that would be part of the reason that it would be deferred to a couple of years from now when that work's done as a synergy?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So as it stands now, you'll see as part of the district meetings coming up, we're focusing sewer efforts this year in Marina Village and a couple of streets in Mariner Cove. And then following that, we'll be paving those areas. Secondly, we have a project after that in the Granada and El Camino area for sewer. And that will be followed by paving. So we haven't yet identified the next sewer project after that. We have a sense of what that is going to be. There's some improvements on Meadow Suite. There's also some potential in the Lakeside areas and then also Christmas Tree Hill. So we'll be kind of looking at that in combination with the pavement need to develop our three and four year plan.
Great. Okay. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, RJ. Any other comments from council members? If not, we have a motion and we are ready for a second.
Let me clarify the motion now that I have it right in front of me. And that is I move that we authorize the Director of Public Works to award a construction contract for the 2020 Accessibility Improvement Project, known as 20001, to the lowest responsible bidder, Coastside Concrete and Construction.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Rebecca, vote please.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kuhnheart.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes. All right, that wraps up 6A. We already did 6B, so we're going to jump down to 6C, which is a verbal update from Town Manager Todd Guzman on the COVID-19 impacts on the town and our response. Oh, you're muted.
I think I want to be muted for this one. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this report provides a brief summary of the COVID-19's impact on Corder Madera as context to a larger financial response and discussion that we're going to have to have in the coming months. As you know, local economic impacts are significant in the short term and will likely be felt for the next two to, two to three to four years. It's still too early for us to project with accuracy the duration of the impact of this emergency on the town revenues and expenses. You know, economists' opinions have currently varied, but most projecting this is going to be years, not months. With a lot of the financial unknowns, you know, specifically, you know, how will the state and federal assistance of any come down to local agencies? Staff has, has prepared for massive revenue losses. I don't know if you saw it on the IJ earlier this week, but our cohorts in Sausalito provided a financial report to their council and they listed three scenarios and it was bad, worse and really horrible. I want to go home and not work anymore. This, this projection that we're going to talk about is going to be a single projection and we're going to take a really aggressive stance. So as we go down, we're going to talk about HDL. We rely on HDL to really provide economic support for us in forecasting specific to our sales tax revenues. We, we are looking at the same numbers, your finance director and I, and we actually took a more aggressive approach than even HDL took. And so these numbers that we're going to show you for this current fiscal year and going into next fiscal year, they're likely to happen. And probably a little bit worse. We're projecting a little bit worse than it's going to happen. So this is a really conservative look, but we're preparing for the worst. And so I was, we contemplated giving you a bunch of different scenarios. We need to prepare for what's coming and we think this is our best, our best estimate in the immediate future. What I also tried to do, and we'll talk about it, we try to forecast out. And so as you know, we formed a finance subcommittee years ago in 2017. And we really went back and we took the worst economic downturn and we tried to build resiliency, a number of resiliency models within our current budget. And the good news is we've done that. And so now that's about to be tested. What we did is we took a 10-year finance, financial model to really evaluate things. And so I want to show you some of that financial model of what we projected and then what we're probably going to realize. And you can do some comparisons as we start to think about the future. And so we'll, we'll go through it. So again, I want to provide, I don't want to read this report too much, but I do want to provide some information as this is our opportunity to put in writing and to push information out to the community. But I wanted to start with the background and give context to COVID-19 in general and how it's affected Corder Madera. So on March 16, 2020, the Marin County Health Official, in coordination with six other Bay Area counties, issued a public health alert in order to prevent the spread of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. This order required all persons to shelter in place of residents until the order was lifted. And all non-essential businesses were required to cease non-exempt operations at physical locations with some exceptions. And our report goes through and it outlines a number of those. We also have, on March 17, the Town Council ratified the proclamation of local state of emergency, which was signed by the Town Manager on March 13. There's a link to that if people would like to go to that and see. And one of the things our county did in joining the other six Bay Area counties, and I think it was really important, they were united from a regional approach, right? They did this together. Not all the counties did, but they did it together. And what they did is they took what the governor did in his state order and they actually added, you know, they can't, we can't do less than the state order, but we can do more. And so what the six, the six or seven Bay Area counties did is they added additional restrictions really surrounding construction and a lot of the things that we've been working through at some of our, you know, at some of our public areas within town. As that order came down and we started to put that in place, Rebecca helped me and updated some of the COVID-19 activities. So on page two of the report, you can see as of May 4th, 2020, the confirmed cases of 241, 13 deaths, 3,946 people have been tested and 43 confirmed hospitalizations. And you can compare that to the California as a whole. In addition to the health impacts of COVID-19, the restrictions put in place through the public health order have taken an unprecedented toll on federal, state and local economies. According to the U.S. Department of Labor, since March 16, over 2.6 million Californians have filed for unemployment, representing an unemployment rate of 8.25%. For context, for the week before the issuance of shelter in place order, California's unemployment rate was estimated at 2.44%. The economic impacts have disproportionately impacted low income workers. As of April 24, 2020, the Urban Institute estimates that Marin County has lost over 11,000 low income jobs due to COVID-19 related impacts. Among the hardest hit sectors include accommodations for food service, 3,712 low income jobs were lost, retail, 1,898 low income jobs were lost. And then the healthcare and social assistance, 900 low incomes jobs were lost. The County of Marin has been operating their emergency operations center since March 10 of 2020. And there have been hundreds of programs and projects and actions run through the EOC since that time. Some of the best known are related to the Emergency Child Care Program that was instituted in San Rafael, Nevada, in the county. There's a link to that, the county's COVID-19 resource page, and also our virtual community centers library and resource page. On April 24, 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom announced the launch of the first in the nation, the Great Plates Delivery Program. This program's designed to support residents and those who are of high risk from COVID-19 and staying home and staying healthy by delivering three nutritious meals a day. And so with the help of Ashley How, our Parking Rec Director, and our very own Rebecca Vaughn, they've submitted for that application and we're going to be part of that program moving forward. And we're really excited about that. There's also been a bunch of support for the, for the business community. Small business communities have always been the backbone of the Marin economy and a strong community, you know, contributor to the high quality of life that we share in our county. We're a little bit unique in Corder Madera. We're 75% of our sales tax revenue are really from the top 25 major corporations in town. But we have hundreds of small business owners that provide a great service to our community. The town of Corder Madera started a small business COVID-19 disaster relief fund that was created to help small businesses struggling to maintain cash flow and financial solvency during these unprecedented times. The fund creation was a result of collaboration between the town of Corder Madera, County of Marin, and the Corder Madera Chamber of Commerce. Mayor Beckman, Supervisor Redoni and the Chamber, our Chamber Executive Director Julie Kritzberger took a leadership role and brought partners together with this common goal to help small businesses and sustain their operations due to, due to the pandemic and shelter in place mandate. Our goal isn't to solve the problem with these small loans, but it's to help bridge the gap when larger funding grants and loans can be established through various state and federal stimulus packages. And we've talked a lot about that the last few meetings, really getting those resources out there to our small business owners. The relief fund allows qualified small businesses to apply for one-time grants from one to $2,000 each. And again, to pay for immediate operational costs moving forward. To date, we've, between the three entities, we have $100,000 raised. It's within my spending authority. And so through coordination with the mayor, we've developed this fund. Lorena has helped us on our side. She's helping oversee this program. And I'll be coming back to the council at the upcoming meeting to ask for additional funding. I think to provide a grant to every small business, I think we have approximately 90 grant applications right now. I anticipate about 300. I'm going to request additional funding through the sales tax measure to support that. I think it's important and I think part of the sales tax fund measure is really on the shoulders of small businesses. And I think it's appropriate to, to recommend that to council for consideration. So that will be coming back to you at an upcoming meeting. Staff has also been directly working with local businesses to help them navigate and better understand the myriad of financial relief programs available to them through the Federal Cares Act, the Payroll Protection Program. And additionally, staff at the request of the mayor is evaluating a deferral of business license payments for, for a period of months to small business owners with this upcoming round of business license fees. The town currently receives about $585,000 a year annually in business license fees. I think the vice mayor asked that question at the last meeting, double checked that number. And so again, as we go through the reality of the town and our impacts, we're also trying really hard to help our business community get through this, this really difficult time. Something we're also doing, and it really started with a discussion that I had with the mayor, council members and with Council Member Barbara Vazio, is to support the vulnerable communities and what can we do about that? And so staff's been coordinating with the county and focusing on support for vulnerable communities. The following are a couple of examples on page four. Again, the lease and eviction protections. As the dynamic COVID-19 emergency continues to evolve, measures have been taken to bring housing and commercial security to residents and business owners who are economically impacted. On Tuesday, March 24, 2020, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to adopt an emergency resolution issuing a temporary moratorium on residential and commercial evictions for non-payment of rent due to, excuse me, due to the direct impacts of COVID-19. A town staff and our town attorney actually, Teresa, took a big role on this, coordinating with the county to make sure that all the Marin jurisdictions were represented. And this was a county-wide program. The eviction resolution prevents residents and business owners, prevents residents and business owners from being evicted because of sudden loss of income tied to the pandemic. The moratorium will be in effect until May 31, 2020. And people are protected for the following bullet points, business closure, loss of work wages, layoffs, miswork or childcare expenditures, medical expenses and other similarly caused reasons resulting in a loss. The resolution requires renters and leaseholders to notify their landlord within 30 days after the rent is due that they're unable to pay because of financial impacts to COVID-19. It does not relieve the residence, the residential or commercial tenant from the liability of the unpaid rent. On April 28, 2020, the Board On April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, the board amended the eviction moratorium to expand on the protections. Such as adding a provision providing up to ninety days after the expiration date of the resolution to, to pay back the rent. There's been a lot of discussion over this. You know, I think San Francisco does six months and some have even asked for a year. And so I think the board, you know, it was asked of the managers of what we recommended, and I think we all landed at the ninety days seemed like a reasonable place to, to. To start, but if the council feels strongly about that, you know, feedback would be helpful moving forward, so I can share that with the county. Also, emergency subsidence payments. As you know, on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty, President Trump signed into law. The Cares Act, which appropriates nearly two trillion dollars nationwide for relief. Part of this relief package, as you know, the county was awarded nine hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars to the Community Development Block Program. And so that nine hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars is divided between the county of Marin. Which includes all cities and towns less than fifty thousand in population and then San Rafael and Nevada. The approximate number available to the county and the smaller cities which were included in is, is approximately three hundred and forty six thousand dollars. And so that, there's a recommendation that that money go towards rental assistance for the county of Marin, which includes Corder Madera residents. And so that recommendation is going to the priority setting committee, which our very own Vice Mayor Coonhardt is on. And so we fully support that and we think that is a great way to spend and utilize that, that monies going back for rental relief. It should also be noted that under the leadership of council member Revazio and the Corder Madera Community Foundation, they're donating twenty five thousand dollars towards rental assistance. The town is going to match that amount and staff will come back at the next council meeting to ask for additional monies. Again, from the sales tax measure, as it's, you know, as that sales tax measure, as I said earlier, is on the shoulders of our. Commercial businesses, it's also paid by a portion of our residents. And so we think it's an appropriate use of money to support those in need, both on the commercial side as well as our residents. And so we're excited about getting that started and thank you, council members for helping me get that going. Also, just some background, just scrolling down to page five, we're almost there, that's at the numbers part, but background on state and federal support for cities. There is a lot of moving parts going on, there's a, there's a letter attached by our mayor on the impacts to us. We've been really working with our local legislators, Senator Maguire and Assemblyman Huffman. On not just individual cities and towns, but really through the Marin Managers Group and the. And the council members and mayors group of sending united messaging of the impacts to our county. And so that is really, you know, that, that's seven days a week, twenty four seven, right now, there's a bunch of examples attached to the report and outlined in page five of my report. I also want you to know that staff's working diligently with other Bay Area cities and towns and local government professional associations like I C M A. And we continue, I know that I have multiple conversations with each one of you on a weekly basis. You know, as we talk about in our own areas gathering and sharing ideas of best practices. You know, that we take from, you know, someone else that we heard of a great program that they're doing. And so that's happening at all levels of our government and that's exciting to me because that's the way government should be. And I think we're really putting together some great programs and assistance moving forward. And I hope that builds relationships amongst us all. I hope it doesn't take a disaster like this for us to do and communicate like we are as a group. And so I think that is a real good positive moving forward. And I feel supported as staff on all levels. So let's move into the analysis. So as illustrated in the background section, the current public health state of emergency due to COVID nineteen has created really severe financial burdens on the town. As it has across, you know, the globe. And, and so. As a result of the community, as a result right now of the effect in the near shutdown of all economies, many of the town's revenue sources are projected to be significantly impacted. For the last quarter of fiscal year nineteen twenty and for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And so that's where I'm really going to focus my conversation for everybody. And although the revenues are forecasted to recover in the future, I really think, and you'll see in a second of why I'm going to say this. I think it's going to take us until twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four to fully get back to our revenue streams of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. It's not the end of the world for us because we have a plan, we expected economic downturn. It's just more severe in a short period of time than we anticipated. But I'll kind of walk you through of why I'm not necessarily. Going to recommend wholesale cuts because I don't think we need to. And I think that was one of the, the goals back three years ago, we formed the finance subcommittee and we looked at the sales tax measure. We knew every five to seven years, you're going to have a major economic downturn. We're susceptible to every disaster known to humankind. To prepare and build redundancies into the system and use it as opportunities, but not to cut services. And I'm not going to recommend that we cut services. But I'm not, I'm also not going to sit here and put my head in the sand and say, we're not going to be impacted. We're going to get hit one of the hardest per capita in the state of California. You know, but we have a plan and so I'm going to walk you through it. So. So again, economists are predicting cities and towns such as Corder Madera that are heavily reliant on sales tax transition and use taxes and transient occupancy taxes will endure the hardest financial hit. So in March, staff began analyzing towns' financial situation based on the shelter, shelter and place order. And so we started to look at, at potential revenue losses. So as you go to page six. Daria filled in some numbers for us and she breaks down comparative, you know, in, in the paragraphs, differences and, and the cuts, but I want to focus on the chart. So this revenue item chart, this is really our losses. So if you take our sales taxes. If you take our sales tax and you combined measure F and our one percent sales tax, so the two pots of money and you combined them, we're anticipating a one point nine. Million dollar loss this fiscal year. We're projecting in fiscal year twenty twenty one for it to jump to three point two million dollars. We're anticipating a really aggressive thirty percent loss to revenues. And so let's talk about why we think that. So when we look at fiscal year nineteen twenty and the one point nine million dollar loss. We're looking at, you know, we're going to see online sales will increase, but all of our other big, our twenty five. You know, top sales tax producers are all closed, they all closed, except for Safeway was one of the top twenty five, but all of them closed. And so you can really easily then back out four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks of lost revenue. Right now, this projection is showing our economy being shut down through June. Okay, and so we know that we're going to start soft opening this month. So these numbers potentially can be better. Online sales could be more, we just haven't seen those estimates yet. So we're taking a really aggressive stance, this is a thirty percent projected, I'm sorry, it's a seventy percent projected loss to this, this fourth quarter. Or for this quarter of sales tax revenue. If you go down to transient occupancy tax, two hundred and forty two thousand dollars this fiscal year. What we basically did is our hotels are shut down and so we're going to receive some tax, some money and revenue from that for the last three months of this quarter. But we're projecting a total loss. And then you can go down to recreation revenue, all of our programs have been shut down, so we've lost revenue there, rental income. We've also saved a little bit money on the expenditure side, and so hopefully we can offset that. And then again, on the permitting franchise fees and investment earnings, as you know, in our life fund. The government basically stopped interest rates, so there's zero, so we're not, we're not collecting money. We currently have thirty million dollars in cash in those life accounts. That's one of the reasons why I'm not losing sleep right now, twelve million of that is the sanitary district and the rest is our operating budget. So we, we have cash, the bad news is we've been, we've been realizing, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars in interest earnings a year because of that money being in life. And so we're estimating some of that three hundred thousand there is estimating losses. When we went to fiscal year twenty twenty one, we, we projected, the county projected eighteen to twenty three percent losses to sales tax revenue. They're a little bit different in their point of sale and how they're impacted to us. H D L did an evaluation, they anticipate anywhere from twenty, twenty three percent max. We're projecting a thirty percent increase. I'm projecting it because I think it's likely and it's aggressive and I don't want to have to come back to you and say I underestimated something, but I think it's really likely. If you put me, you know, on the spot right now and said, what's going to happen, this is what I think is going to happen. And what I also think is going to happen, as we look at the economy, you know, we're, we need to find a vaccine, so how long does it take to find a vaccine? Is it eighteen months, is it longer, shorter? You know, as we get through the summer and we open, are we going to come right back into stay at home orders? When we hit the fall, we're projecting the answer is yes, we're projecting that we're going to have, we could potentially have stay at home orders later this year. So we're going to project that into our budget. If we don't have stay at home orders, these numbers will improve by fifteen percent right off the top. We're also projecting really our economy taking about eighteen months to reset. And that's again, if stay at home orders and things like that go according and, you know, we're able to work towards a vaccine in the next eighteen months. When you look at this again, we're projecting a six point six million dollar loss to revenues. I am not projecting a six point six million dollar deficit. So just again, we wanted to like, give you something that you could wrap your head around and kind of see numbers and understand how we got there. And what the projected revenue losses are, we're going to come back to you as staff in the, in the coming weeks to come up with some solutions. But really, how we're going to approach this. We believe that we can take expenditures right now without, with, you know, without deferring maintenance or any capital improvement projects. And we feel like we can reduce this potential deficit in fiscal year nineteen twenty from two point seven million to about seven hundred to nine hundred thousand. We're going to then come to the council and request that you take that seven to nine hundred thousand from our operating budget. It's currently sitting in our general fund, as you know, we had a three million dollar surplus last year. We put a million dollars of that towards our pension trust and we left two million dollars in our, in our general fund. Just for this reason, sales tax revenues ebb and flow. And so we wanted just to see what was going to happen this coming year and have that money for a rainy day. The rainy days here, we're going to request, you know, seven to nine hundred thousand of that two million dollars surplus sitting there. So then theoretically, you're carrying one point one million dollars over into next fiscal year. For fiscal year twenty twenty one, again, there's a number, and so if you scroll down to the next model, I'll show you the difference here. Some of this money that I'm showing for the sales tax revenue of the three point two million, it's a combination of the sales tax and measure F. So if you look at fiscal year twenty twenty one, again, we're looking at a two million dollar loss in revenues. For the one percent sales tax. Measure F again, we bring in about, we anticipated four million dollars this year, we're anticipating a one point two million dollar loss there. When we, when we passed measure F, we anticipated the revenue to increase from two point four million dollars to three point four, three point five million dollars. Our economy just did so well when it passed, it jumped to four million dollar projections. So when I look at these losses and I look at fiscal year nineteen twenty and I go all the way out to the projections of twenty three, twenty four. Those numbers really are kind of where we thought we would be when we passed measure F, when I thought about capital improvement projects. I'm not concerned on the capital improvement project side. We have ten million dollars in our sales tax fund, measure fund right now. We have twelve million dollars in our sanitary district fund. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to look, you know, work with RJ, you saw part of it tonight. We're going to say, hey, let's keep going at about a four to five million dollar clip on our capital improvement projects. And then let's front load some of the sanitary district projects these two fiscal years. And try to control that, keep our projects going, but also manage our money because we want to leave some money in our account as well. And so I feel comfortable there. Part of the sales tax measure, we have two point five million dollars set aside in an emergency reserve. That emergency reserve is for emergencies just like this, you know, we never thought about a pandemic, but we thought about earthquakes. What if there's an earthquake and our shopping center went down? What happens if we lost revenue sources for three months? How long would we need, how much money would we need to, to, to front payroll before we could get funding from the federal government? And so the finance committee recommended two point five million. So right now, when I go into fiscal year twenty twenty one and look at the operating budget, which is all of our personnel, that's our pension cost, that's our salaries benefits, it's all that good stuff, that's what provides our service. I have two point five million dollars available to me to recommend to you for you, for use if needed. And I also have the remaining one point one million in our surplus funds that we had from the previous year. So it's three point six million, right? So my plan to come back to you on for fiscal year twenty twenty one. I'm going to recommend that we make some smart cuts, that we use contracts smarter. That we use shared services as an example of what RJ just pointed out on a simple project, we're going to save them a hundred thousand dollars, imagine that. You know, doing joint contracts with other jurisdictions. I'm also going to recommend as one of our redundancies that we built into the system. We've built six million dollars in pension, in pension and retiree health trusts that we control, six million we built. We put one point two million annually into those funds. In the bad times, we've always, we put in place for the, for the finance committee. That we, that ebbs and flows. If you look at our ten year forecasts, it ebbs and flows from one point two million dollars down to six hundred thousand. What I'm going to recommend is that we bring it to zero this next year and I'm going to show you a modeling of why I say that. And I'm going to basically say that's control cost, let's share services and contracts where it makes sense. And let's not do a payment to our trust funds this next fiscal year. If we do that, we can balance our budget. We're not touching the two point five million dollar emergency reserve and the sales tax measure. We're not touching the nine hundred, the one point one million sitting in our surplus fund in our general fund. I believe we can balance the budget. If I'm wrong and things get worse, we do a stay at home order that's six months. Well, then I'm coming back to you and I'm going to say, we need to pull the emergency reserve fund from the sales tax measure in our surplus monies. My point is, I think we're going to be just fine, we're going to get hit, we're going to get crushed, actually, but we, we're going to be okay. I don't need to come back to you with cutting services, doing furloughs, doing ten percent pay cuts, I don't need to do any of that stuff. I think we have a plan and I know I'm, I don't have it in front of you, I'm talking in kind of bigger picture. These numbers are big, but I think we, we have a plan and that's what I'm going to now present to you over the next couple of meetings of what I'm talking about. And then have, and then to have a nice thoughtful dialogue of, that's great, I want you to do more, I want you to do different projections, we'll talk about modeling and how it works. This is just how I've been really looking at it, big picture with my staff and talking to others and talking to H D L, making sure our numbers are right. I want to take these recommendations and really work it through with the sales tax oversight committee and our finance committee. And I want to come back to the mayor and vice mayor and the council with, with that conversation. Because again, it's just not me giving this recommendation, there's a lot of people that built this system together and those two committees are a big part of it. If you go forward and you go out, you can see where, you know, let's look at fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, the year before, we brought in six point two million dollars in revenue in our sales tax. And then it jumped to eight point one million. And the reason why is some, it was to your question, Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, the payments were late. There was a lot of reasons for it, people made late payments, the, the, the state was late and giving it to the, to the county, to us. And so we had a lot of deferred payments that, you know, about six hundred thousand dollars that weren't paid in the prior fiscal year that got pushed over into eighteen nineteen. We also had crazy success in our economy for Tesla, Apple, our big twenty five, you know, earners in our, in our community. And we had a, you know, an eight point one million dollar revenue stream, this is the year that we had a three million dollar surplus. We handle our, as you'll see as you go out with our ten year modeling projections between, you know, eighteen nineteen all the way to twenty three, twenty four. We really take a conservative approach here. Our revenues probably, if this didn't happen, would jump on sales tax between eight million and six point five. And that's how it would just, it would just go like that through the next five to six years. So we try to keep it flat, we conservative, we raise it fifty thousand each year, we keep it real conservative because we don't want to overestimate, right? Because in the down years, you could have a half a million dollar deficit to that. But you can see that we really aren't going to come back to where we need to be until fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. And so, and this is just really my message to you of, of why I say that and why I think that. I also, and I'm going to project it for you in a second, but in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, a lot of agencies didn't anticipate this, but we're going to have a huge, large hit to the pension funds. We're going to have it, the county's going to have a large pension hit, that's going to affect us on all of our J P As. Where they have full costing, cost recovery methodology that we have to pay. And so we pay for their unfunded liabilities within their costing methodology and all of our J P As. And so that's going to get passed on to us and we're also going to take a hit. But I'm going to explain to you again that we plan for that and I'll, and I'll share that with you in a second. Again, lastly, before I show you one of our modeling and I'll open up to any questions. Again, lastly, before I show you one of our modeling and I'll open up to any questions, our road to recovery. And so this is Marin recovers. And it, it was a new site. It's basically put together by all the agencies and overseen by the county. And it's really how we're going to get back up and running. And so Marin recovers, you'll hear the, the, our county health official talk about it. There's a number of things to happen. There's three phases to this process. They're on page eight of my report. And again, phase one is slow the spread. There's a number of things that have to happen. You know, phase two is the sequential reopening under the stay at home order. That's, that's what we're talking about now. And it's the end of the stay at home order. One of the things that we are continuing to play catch up with, and I'll give you an example. When I told you that the county health official joined six other Bay Area counties and really had more restrictive stay at home orders than the state, we just, this last Wednesday, basically mirrored the state in those, in those restrictions. And so we lowered the restrictions, the county official did, based on a number of criteria based here on this website. If anyone wants to go to it. And so that was good. And so now all of our construction that was currently going on is back up and running using, you know, health and safety standards and protocols. And so that's good. Then what happened is we had the issues that happened over the weekend and Governor Newsom just announced that they're going to release and, and do more, they're going to release some of the restrictions of the stay at home order and they're going to announce it on Friday. And so now the question is, the county health official on our side has to decide, are we going to stay united with the other six Bay Area counties, which we are all unique, we are all different in our own ways? Or are we going to start to look at data ourselves like Sonoma County is and go, and we're going to do something different? And so we can't do less than the state order, but we can mirror the state order, or we can do something more restrictive based on our needs. And so what we're told by the county health official is that is exactly what he's going to do. He's not going to rely on the other six Bay Area counties necessarily. He's going to look at the data, see what the state did, see what the state does Friday and to decide, what are we going to do? Are we going to mirror the state or do something in between? One of the questions is, you have some businesses, specific businesses can now open. And then they can do curbside pickups. Well, imagine curbside pickups in downtown Markspur or San Antonio. What does that look like? You know, there's some, there was some discussion that schools and shopping centers will open later. They're not part of this, part of the order. Well, what about open air shopping centers like we have? You know, they're different than closed there. And so there's a lot of discussions. And so what the county is doing, the managers, you know, the council members, we're all trying to get the right people in the room, the experts in all the industries, it's again on Marin recovers, you know, dot com on their, on their website. It talks about this. But getting all the sectors in the room to give advice to the, to the decision makers of like, why it should be considered and how they're going to do it and be safe and how we're consistent. And so, you know, when I thought I knew something and how I was going to approach and allow for our, for our city, our town, I was going to allow curbside pickup. You know, it's not as easy as it sounds. And then all of a sudden this order, you know, it's, it's, it's going to change. And it's, and I'm not saying it's for the better or for the worse, it's just going to change and we need to be up to speed so we can support our residents and business community with that. I've never seen anything moving at this pace. It is unprecedented. Teresa's been doing this a lot longer. And I, you know, I just, I, I talked to her all the time. Like this is crazy. And so, you know, we are talking twenty four seven. You know, I'm talking to the mayor on a Saturday night and I'm talking to Teresa, you know, ten AM on a Sunday, preparing for Monday. And it's, it's just moving really fast, but I just want everyone to know that your town staff and your council we're, we're on it, we're working on it and we're, we're, we're going to try to get the right people into the room and support them. And one of the things I want to do is get Mesa Ridge, you know, one of our shopping center owners in that conversation with the county to have the specific discussion of our shopping center where we think we're unique and we want to have a conversation about that, but we want to do it smartly. Lastly, I want to show you just one example of our modeling. This is for Roy Wilford and, and for Carl Spurzen, if you're out there, you know, this is for us geeks that like numbers. Can you, can you give me the control? Rebecca, can I have control?
Yes, I'm doing that right now. While I do, I just wanted to announce for any latecomers to the meeting since I announced at the beginning of the meeting, but the town manager's report that he was summarizing verbally, there is a written portion that is available on the town's website, but I also loaded it up to the handouts section of your dashboard and you can open it up and follow along there. So.
Okay.
Todd, do you have control?
I'm trying to get control. Do I have command?
I do.
Can you see this?
Yes.
All right, hold on now. Okay, can everybody see this page? Rebecca, can everyone?
And the audience.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm blind. I can't see you. Don't make any faces. Okay. So here's a conversation. This isn't good times and bad. Before you can even talk about any modeling, you need to consider, you know, looking at ten and twenty year trends, you have to focus on our debt, our unfunded liabilities. And so I want to show you an example. This is Gov Invest software. Rory, this is what, you know, I want to talk to you about and put our heads together of how we forecast, but we spent a lot of time with the, with the finance subcommittee on this. And so I want to show you something. And so I'll, over here, we're, we're off to the left of the screen. What I'm doing is I'm starting and I'm projecting seventeen years out. And so I'm basically taking twenty sixteen and I'm working my way, you know, to twenty thirty four and on. As I go down, I put in some assumptions. And so we can do this real life. So a lot of time when you get like modeling on an actuary report and it says, I unfunded liabilities sixteen million. You know, that's a snapshot in time that's two years old. What I'm going to tell you is our unfunded liability is thirty to forty million dollars, but I don't want you to lose sleep over it because there's a plan to pay it off in seventeen years. And I'll explain how. And so what we did here is these are the discount rates for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one for CalPERS. This is what CalPERS rates are. So this is where we pay our normal cost. And we also based on there, again, they took our unfunded liabilities of what they think we owe at this discount rate, it's in the sixteen, seventeen million range. And so they amortized it out over twenty to thirty years. And they said, here's your unfunded liability payment each year. Also with the normal cost that we pay towards our employees. What we did is we did that third party actuarial, we had Bartel and Associates come in and we asked them, where do you think CalPERS is ultimately going to land in the next ten years? Where do you think that discount rate should be? And they gave us an estimate of six point two percent. They said you should be at six point two percent. So that's what you see here, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three on is a discount rate of six point two. Our employees currently pay five point five percent towards the employer's contribution. If you go down here, these are the investment rate of returns. And so for eighteen nineteen, CalPERS had a rate of return of six point seven percent. For nineteen twenty, it's probably in the negative. I'm not sure, but I'm just for right now and I'll show you, I can do some scenarios. It's zero. And then what I did is I showed a five percent return rate for twenty twenty one. And then again, I went back to the six point two modeling moving forward in future years. I then went to our one fifteen pension trust. Our one fifteen pension trust currently has about three point two million dollars in it. We've been contributing to that over the last three years. For fiscal year twenty twenty one, I'm projecting zero payments into the trust fund. I'm not asking and projecting that we pull any funds out of the pension trust. We don't need to do that. I'm just asking, let's not submit any payments into it this fiscal, this coming fiscal year. And one of my reasons is because last year, we not only put in the, the budgeted nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we also put a million dollars of surplus funds into it. And so we're still on track. For fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, I'm projecting four hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit into the trust fund. It'll go up to five hundred thousand. And then twenty three, twenty four and on, it'll stay flat at about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for seventeen years. As you go down, what this chart shows you, it takes the, the CalPERS estimates, the actual rate of return in our trust fund payments and it puts it into a chart. And so when you talk about, let's go to twenty twenty right here. So when you talk about what our unfunded liability is today, it really should be, it's nineteen million seventy eight thousand dollars. What we should have in the fund to date is seventy four million. What we currently have in it is fifty four million, right? Okay. So then when I go down here is I talk about the salaries. And so I take all of our bargaining units, you have the miscellaneous employees, that's full time and part time. You also have safety. So that's the fire authority. All of our safety employees have now moved into the police and fire JPAs, but we still have an unfunded liability that was realized in past years before the consolidation. That stays with the town. It's projected in our liabilities. What I did down here in fiscal year nineteen twenty, our employees had a two point seven five percent salary increase. In twenty twenty one, they're scheduled for the same. And so there'll be discussions about that as we move forward too. Of do we want to freeze those, those increases for a period of time as a safety measure, as we prepare for, you know, what's coming. For fiscal years twenty one through twenty three, I, I'm recommending that we do not consider any salary increases until we get out of this issue and can better forecast. What I did for twenty three on, right now, I'm just projecting an annual COLA increase of two and a half percent. And I'm not, I'm not recommending any changes in the workforce on this bottom level. So these are my really quick down and dirty inputs. If you do that, what I want to take you to is my first question is, when does the curb increase? And you can see right here in twenty one, twenty two, you see an increase. It's pretty dramatic, right? Because this is really what our rate should be. It should be about six point two percent. You're also going to see a hit in, you know, in lower estimated rate of returns for CalPERS. But then what you start to see as we go out and we continue with this methodology, when are we fully funded? And our fully funded date is approximately twenty thirty two, uh, twenty thirty three. You know, if you go back one more, twenty thirty four, we actually start to build a surplus of three point two million dollars right here. Right? And so then I know what Rory's going to say. And so Rory's going to say, well, Todd and Carl, that's great. But I think the rate of return should be five percent. Right? That's the Joe Nation report years ago. What does five percent do for us? And so if we put five percent in, and we put the rate of return over a fifteen year period at five percent, this is what it does for us. And so what it does is in twenty thirty four, instead of having a three million dollar surplus, it's a ten million dollar reversal, right? It's seven million dollars still in liability. In twenty thirty five, we're fully funded. And so it basically pushes us out one more year. Actually, it'll push us out two more years before we're fully funded. And so this is a great mechanism for us as we go to model, to understand where we're at. Let's say you say, hey, Todd, Todd wants to give everyone a five percent raise. And that's good or unfunded. Let's see here, we'll compare it to fiscal year twenty thirty five. So twenty thirty five, you can see the number, it's a two point eight three pension liability. If you give me a five percent, give everyone a five percent raise, it goes from two eight five to three point one three million. And so one of the recommendations of the finance committee is like, look, on average, when you take spans, because there'll be years where we get a little bit more, where we get nothing, you need to average two point five percent or less in your models, in your model. So when we come to council now, you will have something from the finance committee, you'll have something from staff and we'll say, look, we're recommending this. We're staying in whatever we think the COLA increases should be over the next ten years. We're within that, we're under it, we're over it. Here's how it impacts us. And so the council now is, you are now, you now have the tools to kind of evaluate long term issues. These, this is a, a device that we can talk about at our council meetings now live. And so you can't play with numbers. They're real and you, you, you need to speak to them. And so what we did back in our forecasting models of our ten year plan, we planned for this. And so we really planned for six point two percent. Six point two percent to be fully funded by twenty thirty three. The recommendation of our finance committee is, hey, I think you should do a projection of five. Just do five and that's, that's, that's look for the worst returns. And that's planned for the worst. And that really will put us on a projection of being fully funded by twenty thirty six. And so again, as, as CalPERS kind of figures their stuff out, it really doesn't matter because we're now funding our pension trust at a five percent assumption rate. And so what we'll have to consider when they do figure out that it should be six point two or five point five, we can then change what we put into the pension trust and deferred funds to Cal, to CalPERS when necessary. But right now, we're, we're keeping the money ourselves, we're investing in ourselves and we're putting in our own projections to protect us. And so I don't lose sleep overnight when I look at CalPERS from the standpoint of their assumptions. I think we have pretty strong assumptions. And again, but I think it's a, can you continue conversation? And I, and I want, and you know, Roy and Carl are, are kind of the leaders in our community when we talk about this. And so I am looking forward to working on these assumptions in the software with them. But then again, I just want you to know the town isn't looking year to year. We really have been looking out ten years from the operating budget and twenty years from a capital improvement project standpoint. When we talk about the climate adaptation plan, the climate action plan and all of our infrastructure. And so again, on the capital improvement side, that's a two hundred million dollar twenty year kind of number and we have it. Like we're, we're set to get there currently. I don't anticipate us having to raise taxes. The sanitary district fees have been flat for eight years. I don't anticipate even thinking about raising those fees for a period of years as we have a twelve thousand dollar surplus right now. We have an aggressive CIP plan, but again, I don't anticipate those. I do think we need to take the capital improvement project list back to council. We need to have a thoughtful conversation over what projects you want to see over the next two years. I know RJ has done a great job and we're showing you what we're thinking about. I think we need to step back and take it back to council and the community. You know, and what do we want to do over the next? But the, the point is, we're not going to have to cut services or capital improvement projects through this, through this horrible economic time. We're, we're going to be okay because we planned for it. And so I, I know it's a little bit of a mixed message, but I just, I give kudos to all the people who have touched this budget and this plan over the last three years. We're better for it. And so I'm concerned, but we have a plan. So, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Todd. That was a fantastic, very information rich report. Charles, looks like you've got a question?
Yeah, well, I had a few questions. So when, if you defer payment for this year and maybe next, is there more substantial payments that would come once the good times come back in? Or is it basically that you're flattening it out and kind of expanding it over a longer curve? And is there a greater payback if basically, once we do get better, that we prioritize that to compensate and make up? You know, this, to me, it's like the fifteen percent, fifteen year versus thirty year mortgage kind of discussion, right? Like, is that the same with unfunded pension liabilities, right? So that was my, my first question. Another question I had was with the soft opening stuff, the idea of the twenty five big company, do you have an idea of how many of those would be affected and might have an opportunity to open up? And I would also ask outside of Mesa Ridge, who might be the landlord for some of those, if we also discussed specifically to those targeted ones, how we can help them? So then I just wanted to say, you know, you asked for help with the, the ninety day extension discussion. I would say my recommendation at first is that when they come up this, that there's a special consideration for people that need extensions beyond that ninety day payback, that they have to have backup to basically get it. Though I also wanted to commend you on your rental easement stuff. I wanted to remind everyone that the workers that usually earn the rental stock are part of the sales and retail environment. And so therefore keeping them around and healthy as part of our community will eventually turn back into the sales tax. And then also, you know, as we see, there might be an advancement. So I, I do applaud your, your maintaining services and your aggressive financial kind of security. But then, you know, I've worked on large capital projects where we have contingencies. And at the end, we get the benefit of what do we do with the leftover contingency, right? And so I'd also like to understand what the priorities is, if, if we also see that conservative has set us up for a good place to basically what we want to prioritize moving forward is. And if you've thought about that already or understand how to prioritize, you know, that type of thing, not just go negatively, but also think in both directions as a dynamic graph. So those were my kind of question statements and you can answer the ones you feel capable of now and then we'll discuss more later. So.
Thank you. Is it okay if I answer him now, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please. And just a reminder to council members, we're doing questions right now and then we're going to do public comment and then we'll come back for comments for council members. Go ahead, Todd. Yeah, please. And just a reminder to council members, we're doing questions right now, and then we're going to do public comment, and then we'll come back for comments for council members. Go ahead, Todd. Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you. So when we looked at the, um, the pension trust, really where we started to really get a good amount of interest and feel good about that account at a five to eight percent rate of return, because that's what we've realized over the last few years, was getting that number over three million. And so that's where we're at. When we then projected out ten years, uh, we wanted to average, we had to average to meet the five percent discount rate assumptions ultimately and pay this thing off in twenty thirty four under those conditions. We had to average five hundred thousand a year over that period. Um, and so with what I'm recommending, based on what we've done previously and what we're doing moving forward, um, we'll be able to keep that average. And so I'm okay. I don't want to go below it. If I go below it, I'm gonna have to come to you and go, that affects us by two years. Are you okay with that? That, so, so I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Um, and so, and, and it's, again, we have six million dollars in those two trust funds. It's more than anyone else that I've known in my cohorts of talking to them, and I'm pretty comfortable with it. And the other thing about it, what it allows us to do, it allows us in the good, in the bad times to, to, uh, reduce our payments, you know, from one point two million to five hundred thousand. That's a pretty good, you know, range there. I think there's going to be a lot of years where we're going to put a million dollars into it. Um, if my assumptions are, are, are too high and we have savings in that operating budget, what I'm going to come back to council with is say, hey, let's leave some money in the operating budget like we did before. That allows us flexibility in these bad times. But also, let's put another five hundred or a certain amount into these funds, the pension trust. It also adds, let's say we get to zero and we're not making any payments for a period of years. We're still getting interest. Let's say things get horribly worse, two times worse than they are now. You know, which is three times worse than it was in the two thousands. We can then go, hey, do we want to control costs and keep payroll? You know, our pension costs to payroll, uh, at forty one percent, because it's going to spike to seventy percent. Let's keep it at forty one and draw a couple hundred thousand dollars a year from the pension trust to, to flatten and control our costs. So we have a lot of options, um, on that front. And so I'm, I'm, I'm feeling really, really comfortable about, about it. On the capital improvement side, it'll just mean that we're going to be more aggressive. And so think about the capital improvement side. Right now, we have ten million, about eleven million dollars in that, in that capital improvement fund. Two point five of it is an emergency reserve. So the rest is sitting there for capital improvement projects. We're still estimated to bring in at least three million annually. We also bring in a million more a year in restricted funds from the gas tax, you know, all the other restricted funds that go to capital improvement projects. So that's four million. And then we also get about five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand annually in grants. And so we can really aggressively, our staff is fully staffed. I thought about, should I freeze positions? And moving forward, we're fully staffed. If a position opens, I'm going to talk to council and say, what do we want to do? Here's our projections. Do we want to freeze it? I've thought about every one of our positions and I'm like, they're essential. Our engineering team, we need to, this is, let's go, you know? And, and so if we save money, I know in the planning commission meeting, we talked about, hey, maybe we're going to save some money on some of these projects over the next couple of years with this downturn. You know, Peter Chase, um, you know, he said, I don't think we're going to see that. He's in the business and industry. He doesn't think it's going to be like the late two thousands, but it's still an opportunity to possibly save money and, and be aggressive with that project. So any, any additional savings, if I overestimated losses, it's going to come into the next item after this and, and explain what my thoughts are about the building, the town hall project. My current estimates put that project in peril. Um, and so, and that's okay. And so we'll talk about what we are, aren't doing. But I also think there's a, there's a decent chance thirty percent that under certain circumstances, that project could turn into a six million dollar project. And if my, if I overestimated some of these losses by ten or fifteen percent and construction costs do go down, I think this conversation's in play in two or three years. And so, and we'll talk about it. So that, I think that on the capital improvement side of your question, it's the town hall project specifically, because the town hall project was never at the expense of other projects. And we're going to do those other projects because we promised the community and that's what the council wants. And then on the operating side, it would go to the pension trust, I think. Hope I answered that. And thank you for the feedback on the ninety day extension. I will provide that feedback. That's helpful.
Great. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Charles. Any other council member questions? Bob?
Yeah, I had, uh, two, and I think you kind of answered one of them. One was, isn't one of the advantages of continuing to spend on capital improvements the next few years, we have a real opportunity to potentially save money? Because we've been paying top dollar for the past few years. And I know in the last big recession, construction costs ended up going down because towns didn't have the money to spend on stuff. So if we're able to do that, we have the potential to actually get some of these and save some money. Isn't that correct?
Yes. Uh, and it's an example of that. Um, and it's a great question. A lot of our projects, as you've known, and we've struggled over it, a lot of our engineers' estimates, they've been coming in, and it's been statewide twenty to thirty percent higher than estimated. Our Tammel, this, the Complete Streets project just came right in a budget at our estimates. And so that, that is an example. Already, you're starting to see a little bit of that.
Right. And then, uh, second question. Internet sales, I can't remember exactly the arrangement. I think, I think we get the sales tax revenue because I, we have a good friend that works at Nordstrom's. And she said they're doing a huge business still with curbside pickup. We get sales tax revenue for that, don't we?
Yes, if it's curbside pickup and at this store, we would get it one hundred percent. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Uh, any other council questions? Okay, awesome. I was just going to ask, uh, how, how long, uh, voluntarily skipping one of our, uh, you know, voluntary pension trust payments sets us back, but you answered that uh, in response to Charles' question. So if there's no other council member questions, we will take, uh, public comment. Rebecca, do we have any?
Thank you. I'm checking right now. I would like to invite anyone listening at home at this time to click the raised hand icon if you have a public comment you'd like to make on this item. And while I'm waiting for that, I will check the email.
And while you're waiting, I just again, wanted to emphasize, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that I'm just, I'm sharing what's inside my head and the things that we're thinking about and why I feel like we're, we have a plan and what we're working towards. But this will absolutely be vetted by our two committees, finance and sales tax oversight, as well as the council. And so I, I do plan on coming to you over the next two to four weeks with specific recommendations. And so, uh, by no means are any decisions being made without you blessing it.
Okay, that being said, I'm seeing no raised hands at this time. Thank you.
Okay, and no emails?
And no emails either.
All right, then we will bring it back to the council for comments. Charles, you were first, it looked like.
Uh, I'll, I'll relinquish to the senior council member.
Okay, Bob, take it away.
I guess that's me. Um, I just wanted to say, thank you, Todd, for having us in the position we're in. Having lived through the two thousand nine, two thousand ten mess, I couldn't believe it when you told us how much cash we had. Most people don't realize this, the town literally did not have cash in two thousand and ten. And we had to actually pay to borrow temporary funds to pay our bills. And because Todd has managed this so aggressively for the past two years and was planning for this, as difficult and as bad as this is, we're going to be okay. I can tell. And I just wanted to say, Todd, thank you for being so aggressive about managing this so smartly. Because this is a tremendously difficult position, but I definitely feel like we're going to be okay. So thank you. That was it.
Amen. All right, Charles.
So, uh, this was, I, I tried to say, so, um, one of the other things is, uh, kudos to, um, you know, uh, trying to lump up contract negotiations to find cost savings. Another thing I think during downturns of this nature, which is different than a fiscal downturn, you also might see more state and federal programs and stimulus that comes in through construction, grants, those type of things. And then also how to facilitate state run programs, right? You know, by housing and utilizing our hotel stock and, and finding mutual beneficial kind of workforce, uh, kind of, um, synergies there, you know, available space to house programs and, and that kind of thing. To keep, to, 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 to find, uh, ways to basically be resilient in this kind of unknown time. And so, uh, all I ask is if those opportunities do come up that you alert, understand whether that would be work for the community and, and what those kind of opportunities are and keep an eye out for them. So because that's just, uh, another comment that I had to say with that. And, and I didn't hear that. I mean, you, you're very much staying to the facts and the political knowns and, and where we're at right now. But, uh, you know, if, if necessary, there might be resources like that, I think, and to anticipate that somewhat and keep an eye out for it would be diligent as well.
Thank you. Will do.
Great. Thanks, Charles. Uh, other comments?
One of the uncertainties, uh, as you defined it, uh, Todd, is how long is this all going to be going on? And you referenced a twelve to eighteen month period to get to a, to a vaccine. I was speaking this weekend with somebody who's in that business, if you will. And his good news was that, on average, it has taken a decade to get to a viral vaccine and some, in some cases, longer to get to, uh, not just effective, but also safe vaccine. So I just wanted to call out that the time horizon for different kinds of behaviors and different kinds of business might possibly be longer than we are anticipating in this. But I think your estimates are, are as reasonable as any, uh, at the present time. Uh, I, I am hoping that we can find very specific ways to get local businesses to, uh, more of them to participate in curbside. I, I like the, the concept of the curbside food for thought from the bookstores and, um, other, other businesses, get them, get them rolling, if not at full speed, at least at half speed. I think, um, well, I, I may comment a little bit later when we do individual reports, uh, on the, uh, situation with schools, unless you want to hear that now.
No, I think your, your council report's going to be a good time for that. Thank you. Okay, great. Um, I will just share, uh, two kind of, uh, sort of like principles that I would hope to see uh, us kind of act on, uh, as we move forward. And you really sketched out, uh, a great response. And, you know, thanks for this incredible report. Thanks for the incredible work that you guys are doing. And it's clear to me that you guys, uh, we're already all on the same page here. But I just wanted to reiterate, one, the importance of just making sure as a matter of principle, you know, we, we all know that, uh, small businesses are really the backbone of Cordero's economy. But I also just want to make sure that we're not forgetting about, uh, the individuals, the vulnerable residents, uh, and making sure that we're assisting, uh, you know, and sort of equal parts businesses and, uh, residents. Uh, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is, uh, just my personal point of view is, uh, when you're a public agency and you're dealing with public funds, I think it's really important to be as conservative as possible. And I think, uh, I, I just want to say absolutely right on to you with the way you're sort of airing towards worst case scenarios here. I think that's exactly the right path to be taking. Uh, and so I would definitely support, uh, us continuing on that approach. Are there any other comments at this time from council members? If not, I think that wraps up, uh, six C, and we can move on to item seven, which is town manager and council reports. Todd, I hope your vocal cords have had a chance to rest.
Yeah, I, just on, on six C, there were two other just quick updates that I, that weren't in my staff report, if I may.
Sure. Yeah, please.
Okay, so, uh, item four on six C, uh, there was a discussion of the town hall remodel. As you know, it's going through the design review process right now. Uh, there was a lot of discussion over what we are, aren't doing. And talking to the council, you know, I felt it's important and staff that we move the project forward as it's part of our twenty year plan of, of really solving, you know, fifty to hundred year problems to the best we can. And, you know, our town hall is part of that. And, um, there's a lot of time and resources have been spent on it. We're basically in the, one of the final stages of at least on, you know, the design review portion. And so I think it's, we've had a lot of community engagement. And so I think it's important to continue with that. But again, um, as we've discussed, it's a whole new ballgame. A lot of people are like, why are you continuing with something that shouldn't happen? And I just respectfully, I disagree with that assumption. Uh, but I also absolutely recognize that, you know, and this, this isn't a ten million dollar project. It's now in the high sevens. Uh, it's still too high. It's still something, you know, things will have to change financially for us to consider it. But I want to, I wanted to go through the design review process to be positioned over, because once that is complete, we have a three year window before that information becomes stale. And I believe in the three years, I think there's going to be opportunity for an evaluation of where this could be a six million dollar potential project. And if it is, based on what potentially could happen in the next three years, I want a position for a conversation for consideration for the council to, to move forward with it. But at the same time, the council is going to have to hear alternatives. You know, we're going to have to consider leasing space, possibly at maybe the Cordero Town Center or other places, uh, you know, around. Maybe a smaller remodel, um, any options on the table, we're going to have to really consider and vet over the next three years. And so I, I do see this process moving forward. But then coming back to council, when the dust settles, I know my staff has said, a year from now, too much is going to happen. It's, you're talking twenty four to thirty six months to really understand our financial future and really, you know, dial in what the, the design looks of, of the project and what the cost of the project is and where we are financially. Uh, but I do see a path still for that to happen under certain criteria and conditions. Uh, but again, I'll compete, I'll continue to talk to all of you about it and, and, and follow your lead. And on the other part, uh, and it's, um, I was going to do it in my council member or my town manager call, report, but, uh, something the mayor and I have been working on, on our communications plan, uh, I had a great interview with, with Jen Reedy, um, on the communications plan. Um, I want her to, uh, you know, meet each one of you. Uh, and I want you to talk to her and get to know her a little bit and your comfort level as well, some of my staff. But I do see her moving forward and helping us with the, with the townwide survey, looking at best practices and helping us develop our communications plan and infrastructure, both on the website and social media and how we communicate. Uh, and I just, I was really impressed with her. She, I just really got excited talking to her about just the excitement of like, what are we about? Like, every time we communicate, when you see one of us, people know what we're about and, and what we're going to do and, and how we're going to handle things the right way. And it just, it just got me really excited. And one of the things that, uh, the mayor and I were talking about is like, look, let's use technology as an opportunity. You know, we, we push out paper and, and stuff out there, social media wise, let's engage the community and hold a meeting, meet the council, the mayor, the manager, staff every Tuesday at eleven. And so we're going to start that this coming Tuesday at eleven. And, and the mayor and I are going to start off and talk about single issue topics. You know, follow up from the council meeting, talk about what we're doing, and then open, let the community engage us real lifetime for an hour. You know, it's kind of like coffee with the cop, but it's with us, with no donuts. Uh, so we're going to start that and, and start to, start our communication plan moving forward. And so I see, I brought it up because I see the town hall project of being a really important topic to talk to the, the community about, to understand what we are and aren't doing and why we would even consider it. Because I think people get lost and what are you thinking about? Are, you know, we have this unfunded liability or we're, we're at a deficit. We don't have any money because of the grand jury report in twenty ten. Well, it's a whole new era in Cordero and, and they need to know what we're about and we need to tell our story. We thought that would be a good way, um, to do that. The other one is, uh, item five, and I'll be done. The Marine Managers Association have had a number of discussions regarding shared services. You heard one of the examples right now, uh, from RJ. Let's do things smarter as engineers. You know, we're talking about sharing engineers. We're talking about sharing our, we have one of the best project managers in, uh, David Marquez. You know, again, we stole him from the Gelati brothers. I'm sorry about that, but he's, he's really outstanding managing our projects. A lot of their cities and towns want to, uh, buy his services and have him oversee some of their projects. And so we have some opportunities there as well. We're looking at, um, uh, fire, uh, our, our fire chief, it's going to the fire council uh, at our upcoming meeting. Um, it looks like he's going to be retiring. And so we have an opportunity, uh, to, to basically promote within, but also possibly share some services with other agencies at the administrative level. So it's really exciting. Some of the things we're working on. Uh, but what, what jumped out at me in each of these meetings, how we handle it, is we have all the managers and all the directors within that specific department. So it started with Public Works, Police and Fire so far. Then we're going to go to Finance and Admin. What jumped out at me is it becomes really clear where you have managers in some cases, or really directors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, speaking on behalf of their city or town and their council on what they're interested in and what they're not interested in. And what I'll tell you, just one of the things I've always learned is you never consolidate or share services from, from the top down. It normally, it hasn't worked. I mean, I'm, I agree with that. But I also recognize in this case, it's a top down thing. And so unless our fellow council, council members and our, and our, our cohorts in the other cities and towns, some of them are taking, they think they're, they're in the same world they were in past years, and this is a new norm for us. And, and so I don't think people understand where we're at, you know, and I, and I think it's for the better. It's an opportunity to really consolidate government and, and make us more efficient. But it's not happening at all levels of government, uh, with our cohorts. And I just share that with you when you're talking to them. You know, and again, we, we're just not gonna do it to say we did it. It has to meet our criteria. And, and you all brought up great questions, right? And so right now for me, I'm sitting back going, hey, I think we're gonna get through this in one piece. Do I really wanna consolidate with someone that's, their ship just went over the hill and I'm gonna have to pick them up financially, right? I, I, I understand that, but I think there's some really good opportunities for us to consider. Um, but I think there's a disconnect between the council, the manager and the chiefs and the directors. It's really a clear divide in our county. And I don't really wanna get into it on this meeting, but I share it with you, um, because if you feel strongly about it, don't be afraid, uh, to use your voice when you meet with your cohorts and talk to them. I was really surprised and disappointed actually in what I heard. I think people are working, um, on for, just, just looking ahead and, and really narrow scope. I'll tell you, our friends in Larkspur, Mill Valley and Sausalito stepped up all levels of government. They're all, hey, talking the talk. They're walking the walk. They're asking the questions. They're considering it. And so I think that's gonna be where we have some opportunities immediately. And again, with Kenfield Fire District, I think, and sharing some services. But I think for the rest of our cohorts, just because it's a regional thing or a size thing, I don't see us necessarily doing much with them, uh, at this point, um, over the next 12 months, just because of where we're all at in our own situations. But I'll talk more about it later and I'm happy to answer any questions, but it was something that jumped out at me in these conversations. And it surprised me and disappointed me in a little bit too. Cause I think when you're sitting there, coming to the table, you know, consolidate, sharing change is scary for all of us, especially when we work so hard to get in our position. And you're like, oh my God, I could, I could be gone tomorrow. I'm gonna lose my position. You know, for me, I always said, hey, if someone's better than me and I can learn from them and it's better, you know, that I, that's fine with my legacy. I'll, I'll work for somebody else. But I, it's not shared amongst the cohorts. And I was just disappointed that when you come to the table and spend the time, like put everything on the table and vet it, like actually evaluate it. Cause if we don't do it as a group, you'll never have the information you need to evaluate it. And I see it still being stunted. Things haven't changed over the last 20 years. Bob's been through many of those battles. And it's just, it's unfortunately still continuing. So I just share that with you, uh, as we move forward in these talks at all levels. And with that, um, I'm happy to answer any questions or be quiet.
Any questions for Todd? Bob, your video is frozen for me. So if you've got a question, uh, please let me know verbally. All right. With that, was that, was that your manager report also?
Yeah, I just saw it along the way. Teresa will be happy with me. Sorry, Teresa.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Uh, we have lost Bob. Uh, hopefully he'll be rejoining momentarily. But I think, uh, with that, we're gonna move into council member reports. Uh, let's start with Fred. Fred, do you have anything you'd like to report to us? I realize, uh, nobody's been, nobody's been given their, uh, committee assignments yet, or we haven't had any, uh, meetings yet.
Yeah, the only thing I'll report on is, is last week, um, Dr. Bun, Bob Bundy, um, who heads up Flood Commission, while physical distancing, um, we actually went out, took me on a bicycle tour of the, um, flood infrastructure on the east side as well as the marshland. So.
Fantastic. Great. Awesome. Charles, anything to report? Okay, Bob, anything to report?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just, uh, quickly disaster prep council meeting the other day, we had Ruben, our fire marshal there. And he just brought up a couple of really interesting things that I wanted to point out to everybody. He said 911 calls are down significantly right now, and it's because no one's moving around. So, so that's, you know, has less demand on their services. On the other hand though, every time they get a call for service, they have to assume that everybody has COVID-19. So when they go to a home, they have to wear masks, gowns, gloves, everything. So they have to be completely protected. So that's made things, um, more difficult. And, uh, also this was a really exciting, Todd Landau, who works for the county, is gonna be working full-time for Central Marin Fire next year, which is fantastic news for us. Yeah.
That's how we do it.
Yeah, that's great. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thanks. That was it.
Awesome. Thanks, Bob. Very helpful. David, anything to report?
That is great news, cause Todd's been running Fire Safe Marin and, and does a great job. Two things, uh, TAM's, uh, Board of Commissioners did manage to pull together a Zoom meeting last week and, uh, uh, reported very dramatic, uh, downward trend in traffic, upward trend in air quality. And, uh, the clear understanding that they're looking for ways to advance some projects that are more feasible now in public rights of way and in one-on-one rights of way as a result of the lessened, uh, traffic. One of those projects that, um, it depends upon Caltrans is the multi-use path, uh, crossing the, um, Cordera Creek on the east side of the bridge. And that is, uh, moving to, um, uh, construction this, uh, this summer. Uh, I, on the TAM meeting, Charles was, uh, attended, uh, as a observer from the public. And if he has anything else he wants to report, be all by all means.
So thank you for inviting me and allowing me to start familiarizing myself with the, uh, the board and, and, and the, the way it's conducted and, and the, the topics. Um, I think the most interesting thing for me was their discussion about shovel-ready, uh, projects and the state's interest in shovel-ready projects and kind of trying to push us forward and fast-track them, you know, as, as I was trying to allude to earlier. And so, uh, kudos to that. And, and especially now, you know, I, I, I also, uh, work in other transportation areas. And, uh, we've seen real benefits from the slowdown in transportation. Do not want it to last long. But just the other day, um, in San Francisco, they're repaving 19th Avenue right now, which on i- any other time, you would have never done that. The whole town would have frozen up. So, um, you know, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, people on the other committees are also thinking in the right way and taking advantage of these, trying times and trying to make the best of it. So.
Uh, you may be interested to hear that, um, TAM and Marin Clean Energy are looking to work together and collaborate uh, on a, um, program to step up the support for electric vehicle, uh, charging stations and, and infrastructure and, and promotion of electric vehicles. And so there's an MOU that's been proposed and we'll see that move forward, uh, with Charles's, uh, help at the next meeting. TAM also knows that it is gonna have a hit to, uh, some of its revenues, particularly the, that associated with measure AA that's highly dependent upon sales tax. They haven't made an adjustment to their budget yet, but at the next meeting, uh, they are likely to start that, um, appropriate level of downward adjustment, even though they had, do have other funds to move projects ahead. Uh, on the, uh, Larkspur Cordera, uh, Financial Advisory Committee, uh, I attended the first meeting last week, uh, the first of four planned, uh, online meetings. And this one was really to provide background for everybody to understand the entire structure, uh, that supports, uh, uh, our elementary and middle school, uh, district. And they are projecting a number of different possible futures, but, uh, taking a, I think, an approach to go for, uh, evaluating a fairly big hit, mostly from lack of uh, resources from the state. And they've, they're estimating how they might, uh, deal with a roughly $850,000 hit to the next year's, uh, budget. And that might mean some, uh, adjustments, some layoffs and whatnot. None of the adjustments has been discussed yet. Uh, those are gonna be laid out in the next couple of, uh, weeks of meetings. Um, but just in the news today from the state, the state is going, it apparently is going to not punish districts that like ours that have a, um, funding formula that's highly dependent upon attendance for obvious reasons, because the schools have been closed. Uh, so, uh, we'll see whether the hit is as deep as feared as of last week's meeting. But it is something that we should be aware of in our community. That's all. Oh, uh, tomorrow, we think we're gonna have the next meeting, uh, of the Climate Action Committee.
Uh, you said tomorrow, it's a week from tomorrow.
Excuse me, Wednesday. I'm looking at tomorrow, Wednesday, yes.
Yeah. Wednesday, maybe 13th.
Wednesday, we.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I have a few things to report. I attended on April 14th, a, uh, Central Marine Sanitation Agency Board Meeting. The agency's doing just fine. They're being pretty creative and adaptive in figuring out ways for their employees to work remotely where possible. And they're, uh, organizing some, some new graveyard shifts and things like that to try and thin out the amount of people on the plant at any given time. So all is well there for the time being. I've been attending weekly Cal OES briefings, uh, just to try and keep an eye on what's going on at the state level. MCCMC has formed their COVID Economic Recovery Committee, uh, that Fred's gonna be joining me on, uh, starting at our next meeting. They meet every Friday, uh, and are coordinating with, uh, similar work being done by the Marin Managers Association. Uh, things are still kinda fluid right now, uh, but the idea is that we're gonna be sort of generating ideas that we can all implement in our communities, uh, best practices for economic recovery, those sorts of things. Uh, the MCCMC Legislative Committee met, I don't know, a week or two ago now, uh, Jared Huffman joined us, our congressman, uh, and was speaking about, uh, you know, what's going on, uh, at the federal level, uh, with regards to Congress's multiple rounds of, uh, sort of coronavirus relief bills. Uh, one thing that I found interesting was that there has been this conception, uh, that, uh, under the, the CARES funding that's already been appropriated, there's been a conception that, that money is not for, uh, smaller communities. It's not for cities under 500,000 population. Uh, and Congressman Huffman told us that, uh, on the contrary, cities that are larger than 500,000 are allowed to go directly to the treasury and get the money straight from the treasury. But cities under 500,000 should still be eligible to get that money. They just have to go through their state to get it. Uh, so on that note, I've been working with, uh, Senator Mike McGuire and Assembly Member Levine. Uh, had calls with both of them this weekend, trying to figure out if there's, uh, you know, any prospect of Cordera getting some of the $8.4 billion in CARES funding that has already been allocated to the state of California. Uh, we sent a letter to, uh, both of them, uh, just kind of stating that, you know, it is critical to, to small cities who are suffering, you know, greatly or have these huge losses to our revenue. We really do need, uh, this federal assistance. Uh, what else? The Chamber of Commerce, uh, did something that I think is genius. They are waiving, uh, their membership fees, the first-year membership fees for companies, businesses that join, uh, during the pandemic. So I think that's a really smart way for them to get new members while, uh, assisting local businesses. Uh, and lastly, yeah, Climate Action Committee is meeting, uh, Wednesday, May 13th. That is all I've got to report. Um, so that concludes our manager and council reports. Item eight is review of the draft agenda. Are there any council member questions on the draft agenda? If not, we will take public comment on our draft agenda. Rebecca, do you see any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. Um, there are no hands raised. And I'm checking email. No emails either.
Fantastic. All right. And no, uh, no comments from council? Excellent.
This question, uh, yeah, question. Uh, we had our, our retreat, uh, and I was, uh, curious whether our town manager or, uh, any other staff member is gonna sort of come back with notes from that and, uh, laying out our, uh, our agendas.
Yes. So, uh, as part of the procedure, staff normally a week after that retreat, we would have our own, uh, strategic planning session and basically take the info given to us by council and, and develop a work plan for you to review. I just haven't been able to, um, have that strategic planning session yet with my staff. I'm, I'm planning for, uh, towards the end, one of the last two weeks of May, uh, to have that strategic planning session. And so as soon as I have it, I will bring that directly back to the council. So, and I know it's a priority. I just, I wanna have a realistic, you know, strategic planning session with them. And so one has been surrounding money to see what, what do we have to, uh, so I think we have a good idea there. So I, I'm, I'm assuming probably the first meeting in June. Last meeting in May, but I know it's a priority. First meeting in June, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Todd. Um, so what we're gonna do is wrap up this meeting and then move into the Sanitary District Two meeting. Uh, so with that, the Cordera Town Council is adjourned and we will call to order the May 5th meeting of Sanitary District Two. Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Board member Casissa.
Here.
Board member Lee.
Here.
Board member Avazia.
Here.
Board Vice President Kuhnart.
Here.
Board President Beckman.
Here. Thank you. Uh, open time for public comment. Any members of the public may speak on an item not on the agenda. They've got three minutes to do so. Rebecca, do we have any public comment?
I see no raised hands and no emails at this time.
Already seeing none, we will move on. There are no presentations. That takes us to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have already been discussed. Do any council members wish to pull any consent calendar items? Seeing none, does any staff wanna pull any consent calendar items? Seeing none, Rebecca, uh, would any members of the public like to pull any items from the consent calendar or make a public comment on the consent calendar?
I will give people a moment to press the raised hand icon, but I am currently seeing no raised hands and also no emails.
Exciting stuff. Okay, great. Uh, with that, we will close public comment. I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to approve items four A through four C.
Second.
Rebecca, vote please.
Board member Casissa.
Yes.
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Avazia.
Yes.
Board Vice President Kuhnart.
Yes.
Board President Beckman.
Yes. That takes care of the consent calendar. There are no public hearings and no business items, which brings us to District Manager and Board Member Reports. Is there a District Manager Report?
No report.
Alrighty. Are there any reports from board members?
Just, there was one misspoken number in Todd Cusmano's excellent summary of SD2 earlier when he said that SD2 has a $12,000 surplus. He meant $12 million.
Oh, I said thousand. Did I say thousand? Numbers matter.
Well, that's funny because I heard million.
Million was in my head. It's million.
And it stayed there. It apparently stayed there.
Great. Well, uh, with that, we are ready to adjourn this meeting. Great work on that consent calendar. Uh, we are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Bye, guys.
Good night. Thank you.